Everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance that'll be led by Alderman at Large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you to ask your blessings on tonight's meeting. Lord, we thank you for this special time of year when we get to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, Lord. And Lord, I pray that you would help us all to be a little kinder and friendlier to one another, Lord. And Lord, I pray that you would be with us during this board meeting today and help us with all the decisions. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Someone?
Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the South Haven Fire Department release. City Attorney, Mr. Nick Manley.
Yeah, previously the board had approved the South Haven Fire Department working with the Sutter County Schools or different school associations as part of training and mentoring for students who may have an interest in firefighting and paramedics. So tonight, we're just bringing this release for the board to approve. So each individual and/or parent will sign the release before participating in the program. So just need approval for the form of the release so that the fire department can start getting these signed for that program.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for emergency repairs.
Yeah, this resolution authorizes emergency repairs, the amount of six thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-five cents to upcharge plumbing associated with the bathroom repair in City Hall. There was a couple items that weren't anticipated once the repairs began. So the resolution ratifies those repairs as needed for the bathrooms in City Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a contract with the Sutter County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, this contract we've done before. It's just, it's the authorization for the Sutter County Sheriff's Search and Rescue Team. They utilize a Stodden Grove irrigation pond to train. And so as part of that contract, they agreed to identify us along providing their certificate of liability insurance. No cost to them doing it for the training, but it allows them to use our pond for that training. And they coordinate with West Brown before doing anything. So just authorization for the mayor to sign that contract with the Sutter County Search and Rescue Team.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I was just gonna say, I was looking here. It doesn't list us as an additional insured. It just lists us as certificate holder. So we may wanna add our, we may ask them to add us as an additional insured.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get that, we'll request that.
Okay. Andrew, you note that in a minute. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a recommendation for bid awards.
Dan here?
Dan, Mr. Dan Cordell.
He's which side, though? Mayor, Board. We have three tonight. The first one is Gibwell Road Multi-Use Trail. It connects Nail Road, that stretch between Nail Road and May Boulevard with a connected multi-use trail with it. It's gonna be on the east side. We're gonna correct the drainage and put piping and everything. Right now, it just sheets flow, sheet flows onto a side road ditch. The low bid was six hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars with Phillips Contracting. We recommend being awarded tonight and asking for approval from the mayor to sign contract documents, any and all documents.
I'll make that motion. Do we make one motion or?
You can do all these at one time.
Okay.
Okay, would you go through all of them, Dan?
We also took.
Excuse me a second. So if anybody has a question about a specific one, when Dan gets through with all of them, we'll just go to whichever specific item there, there needs to be discussion about.
We also had two term contracts this past year that did not renew due to pricing increases related to their previous term contracts. The first one was the striping and marking term contract. We rebid that. Even though there's an amount that we use to review the bids, we actually issue yearly a list for them to do. But to compare bids, the apparent low was Riverside Traffic, which was our previous term contractor. Recommend award for them. The low bid was three hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. But it is not a set amount contract that we give them. So we're recommending approval for them as the contractor for that, that, that term contract. The other term contract is for full depth reclamation, which again, we had prior. We don't use it all the time, but there are certain roads that have insufficient substructure. And in that case, we use full depth reclamation to fix it. We actually use it around the Landor Center in some areas, if you're familiar. So we actually have two bids on them. We're recommending as lowest and primary bidder Lehman Roberts, which currently has a contract with us on the other C Y paving term contract. Theirs is in an amount of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We would also like to recommend award to a first alternate bidder to give us the option if Lehman Roberts cannot get to the work in a timely fashion to give us ability to use the first alternate bootcon, which we have used in the past in some things. They were slightly out at eight hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred dollars. We're recommending award and, and approval by the ma, approval for the mayor to sign all those contracts.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on any of the items A, B, or C? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of the final change order and payout for the field turf project at Green Brook and Snowdon Grove Parks.
This work has been completed for really over a year. We've been going back and forth over the paperwork. But the first thing that we're asking for approval on is a deduct, a deductive change order in the amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. We do a full quantity assessment at the end of it to do unit adjustments. It resulted in the negative decrease in the contract amount. So we're asking for approval for that deduct change order. And then we have, based off of that deduction in contract, we have the last and final pay application, which releases some work money, but most of it's retainage that we held until it was finally. And that final payment is in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents, and that'll close out this contract. We're asking for y'all's approval for the change order first and then approval for us to process that payment.
Somebody? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is authorization for the South Haven Fire Department to seek approval for bids.
Yeah, just the South Haven Fire Department's bids for our current bids and quotes expires end of this year for their uniforms. Just need authorization to go seek bids for uniforms, be a reverse action in central bidding.
Somebody?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
No motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for information technology surplus.
So we'll just surplus those items not needed for the I-Tech Department in accordance with seventeen, Mississippi Code seventeen twenty-five twenty-five.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Kelly, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Parks Department Professional Services contract.
Yeah, this agreement professional services is Rose Calisac to help facilitate run and host, or not host, but facilitate and run at least eight softball tournaments at the city parks. It's the same individual we've been contracted with for the last seven, eight years. So it'd be a one-year contract until the end of twenty twenty-three. Either party can terminate for thirty-day notice, but it was a recommendation by the Parks Director to continue contracting with Rose Calisac as we've done in the past. So tonight, need authorization for the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with this Calisac.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution for sole source purchase.
Yeah, this resolution for sole source purchase is with the point-of-sale system that's gonna be needed for the amphitheater. Based on the specs that are required, along with the information, I mean, along with the qualifications needed, this was the only first data. Management Services LLC was the only entity that could actually provide what was needed. And it's due to the mobile device act, they're the ones who produce it, I mean, who create it and market it. So they have their own POS hardware, their own payment terminal hardware, along with, they don't have to have a separate third-party getaway or gateway, getaway gateway. And then it also has a perpetual inventory component, which is native to what they create. So this is the only entity that could provide those, those services that are needed. At this juncture, we're still working on the contract portion of the purchase. So for any approval tonight, I would make a contingent upon us getting the contract finalized because there were some revisions I had to make to that contract, and I'm still waiting to hear from them all. So if we do wanna go ahead and approve it, we need to make it contingent upon final review and acceptance of the contract as, based on the revisions that have been proposed.
I'll make that motion. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Payne, second Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
So do we wanna do that or we just wanna table it?
Your call, I mean, that's your call. I'm okay either way. If you wanna do it, if you wanna do it, make the resolution for the sole source contingent upon the contract, and we don't, the resolution would not be signed by the mayor until that contract's finalized where he signs both, that's fine with me. If you want to table, that's fine with me. But if you wanna go ahead, don't, I think the only concern is this time. And so, and I know we need to get it in two weeks, but if it does get finalized later this week or next week, it does, that one week does help getting everything going, because after that.
May I have good with the contingency?
Yeah. Only thing is after the twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, between then and the new year, just being blunt, people aren't showing up to work that much. So I think we did tonight, make a contingent, and the mayor won't sign anything until we have that, until he signs both the contract and the resolution. If it's not done by next meeting, we'll bring it up again. So if that's okay with the board.
Yep, good.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
No motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for liens.
Yeah, this is the resolution that we do every year pursuant to Mississippi Code twenty-one nineteen-eleven that allows us to file the liens for those grass cuttings that were done that were condemned properties. So tonight, need authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution, and it does include the two hundred and fifty-dollar penalty, which is allowed by Mississippi State law. And these will be, these will then be transferred to assessments so that we can still continue to collect on these property cuttings.
Somebody?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook?
So our first application is a subdivision approval of a one-lot subdivision for the Horn Lake Creek Basin Interceptor Sewer District. This is gonna be south of Stanton Road, west of Tulane Road. It's a really odd-shaped lot you see right there. And it kinda hugs the west line of our training facility for the police and fire access. That narrow area you've got right there is where the access is gonna come off of Stanton Road and where the Horn Lake Creek Interceptor Sewer Facility is gonna be in, in the larger rectangle to the south end by the creek line. It is seven point three acres, and again, it does have a fifty-foot wide access drive from the road south to the actual property. It has minimum requirements set forth in the ordinance. It is an industrial lot, and it was voted, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number one on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion by Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is for phase, parcel four, I'm sorry, parcel four of Central Gardens subdivision. If you'll remember, we had a large PUD that came in, which was a mixed-use development, you'll see highlighted there in red, that went all the way from Airways Boulevard on the north side of Nebraska and then carried somewhat to the south side where you see that triangle piece. That's the piece in question tonight, just the triangle on the south side. It has been proposed for single-family lots in a gated community for active seniors, and it is proposed as row housing. The Planning Commission did ask for a detailed set of covenants to include the rental agreements, facades, design materials, which you'll see there, amenities and the association dues to make sure that that doesn't fall upon us in the long run. Once those had been addressed, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve item number two on the planning agenda as presented. Second.
On item two, we have a motion by Alderman Jerome, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion?
Whitney, isn't, isn't there a creek or a ditch in there with some flooding issues?
If you go to the master design of this, those are the elevations, but there should be a portion in there. On the south end of this, there is floodway. There's the large creek system, and there's floodway. Floodway cannot be built on, can't even put a parking lot on it. They have left that open, and they are proposing that as part of the open space. They're leaving it in a natural setting, so it's not going to be touched. And we are in quality and quantity of water in terms of stormwater, so we'll maintain what's already flowing there not to aggravate that creek line at that point.
Okay, well, some of this helped it out, because I know back years ago, was it twenty thirteen, when we had one of the heavy rains, hundred-year rains? I know that some of the homes on Blair Drive had flooded a little bit. The.
They're in a flood zone.
The townhomes that were there.
They were already in a flood zone over there, because.
This will not be in a portion of flood zone whatsoever. But what we wanna ensure when we come in and build it, like I said, there's a master plan as part of this booklet. You'll see that all of the developed areas where the lots will be, where the amenities are, they're actually located north of it. And then where we've left the natural state is where we'll let the water permeate and slow down as it gets to the creek line. But we'll work with Civil Link the entire time to make sure that the quantity of water going into that creek line's not gonna be aggravated, so.
Okay.
Just a great addition, by the way. I think we saw the initial proposal, seemed like it's been a couple years ago, but this is, you know, new construction, you know, in our central part of our city. We hadn't had, you know, any new construction in that area in a while. So I think it's a good concept, you know, having the, the homes there and, you know, the mixed use would be coming in the area as well. So I think it's gonna be a nice little addition to that, that part of our city.
Looks great, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
You gonna move over there?
No.
Okay, any other discussion on two? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Item number three is an application for Silo Square Commercial Lots thirty-three, thirty-six, and thirty-eight. These are gonna be on the north end of the commercial district, on the north and south side of what's called Market Square Avenue now. The one you have to the far west is where you're going to see the farmer's market come into play. The two lots that you see up front are for office uses. I believe they're already sold. I know I'll have a slight planning design review in front of you soon enough. But the only thing different with this is there are fifty-foot right of ways added in for Mayberry Lane, and then it's an extension of the existing right-of-way that we've already dedicated and taken on as a city street. So Market Square Avenue will carry with these lots. They'll build it up to code. They'll dedicate it just as they've done the rest of the Silo Square area, and we'll take it on as a city street. So it was compliant with commercial regulations set forth in the ordinance and voted unanimously in favor by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number three on the planning agenda as presented tonight.
Second.
On item three, we have a motion by Alderman Flores, second Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoot.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
And so in an effort not to be repetitive, because the, the next three items are all associated with the same project. A couple years back, we submitted an application for an RV park with some cabins and some open space and some RV settings on the north side of Airways, on the west side of, I mean, on the north side of State Line Road, west of Airways, behind the C Store and Berry Bush Lawns Insurance Company. Well, to do the master plan for that, you can see there's three different subdivisions incorporated into that master plan. But to do the master plan, we have to have them all in a cohesive subdivision. So the next three applications are simply removing those lots that you have with your applications on your packet. They're removing those lots from all of these different subdivisions. One's Ratner, one's Park Place, and one is BLCS. They're actually removing those lots, vacating those portions of those subdivisions, pulling them out. So the next time they come in with a subdivision application, they'll all be combined as one, so that we can formally do the comprehensive design for the RV park. And from a title standpoint, it will all match up. All of them follow suit with the covenants in those that, that say that if you remove a lot, you have to have the adjacent property owners, north, south, east, west, anything touching that. They all will abide by that. So that we can formally do the, um, comprehensive design for the R V park and from a title standpoint, it will all match up. Um, all of them follow suit with the covenants in those that, that say that if you remove a lot, you have to have the adjacent property owners, north, south, east, west, anything touching that, they all will abide by that. Um, but the, the comments are the same. They all meet the requirements. Uh, that condition is put in the staff report, so we will not record those, uh, revisions until those signatures have been put in place and we will not bring forward the combined subdivision until these are all recorded. We recommended approval and planning commission voted unanimously in favor of it.
Do we need to do those separately, Nick, or carry?
I don't know. I don't know how Nick wants to do it, but it's, it would be items, uh, four, five, and six.
Do it. I mean, as long as it's in, you made this one applicable under five.
Once you, if, if you're willing to do that, make a motion for all three and then if anyone has any concerns among the board, then we'll back up.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, move to approve items number four, five, and six on the planning agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
We have a motion on items four, five, and six by Alderman Kelly, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion regarding any of the three? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
So our final application, it's, I'm sure everybody's noticed that the stake and shake is gone. It's South Crest Parkway and Goodman Road and the black and white building has been removed. Uh, Chase Bank did take on that lot, bought it, demoed it, uh, and they want to come up with a vertical Chase Bank. You'll see, um, the design review in front of you, very neutral tones. Um, they're using the cement panel boards, brick, uh, for the facade, kind of have a modern appeal to it. There were some comments regarding, uh, their lighting, decorative lighting is required, so they were submitting to us kind of a modern design for that. We did make some adjustments to their landscaping and kind of asked them to enhance the Goodman Road area because there's a lot of galvanized metal and overhead power lines that really deter, um, aesthetically from that corner. So they're going to do an enhancement there for us. Uh, but we do see it as a positive. It will also lessen traffic there. So, um, as we've discussed in the past with some other, uh, quick service restaurants that wanted to go in there, we did a traffic analysis. It is obviously already congested. Uh, removal of one of the quick service restaurants and the bringing in of a bank actually will help that. Uh, so planning commission saw it as a positive. They did not, not have any comments regarding the, the facade itself and recommended approval with those minor comments on landscaping and photometrics.
They were out there surveying today, actually. Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve item number seven on the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
On item seven, we have a motion by Alderman Jerome, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. There is one other item that we, uh, tabled at the last meeting. We did not get it on the, uh, on the agenda this time because we weren't done with discussions on trying to frame everything up and finalize the details, but y'all know the discussion we had, the lengthy discussion about the diamonds of, uh, Snowden Grove, uh, the request to rezone that piece of property to allow a hotel. And so, um, the board asked at the last meeting that we go back and that we, uh, set the conditions for a conditional use permit. And so our planning director has done that and we were able to meet again today and finalize that, uh, in written format, which is the memo that's, that's here tonight. And so, uh, just wanted to give the board an opportunity. If you feel comfortable, uh, we feel like it's complete and it's ready now. And if y'all are, uh, willing to go ahead and vote on that tonight, just want to give you that option. If not, uh, then we'll put it back on the agenda for the, uh, the meeting on the twentieth. So.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take it off the table. Second.
Okay. So we have a motion, uh, to vote tonight. Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Flores. Um, the discussion, basically, I'll, I'll review that again. Uh, basically what our concern, the concerns that were expressed by the board and, uh, and by me at the last meeting was, uh, because it's such a crucial piece of property in a high profile location, uh, adjacent to Snowden Grove Park and in our entertainment district, we want to make sure that, that we don't open that up just to any hotel, you know, that may, uh, that may sell out, you know, in the future and become, uh, less maintained and less, um, and less successful as a hotel. And we felt uncomfortable without laying some specifics out there that would prevent, prevent that. So, uh, so what Whitney has recommended, uh, the S R T chain scale is the official, uh, rating scale hotels and they rate the hotels and the different categories. So what is in that area now is, is mid, what they call classified as middle, upper, and then you could go to upper and upper upscale or luxury, you know. So we know that if we put these conditions on there, that whatever brand of hotel that comes, we won't get into another forty five minute debate about what is, is this and what's not this and, and who this is and who they're not. Like the meeting kind of got a little, a little crazy. So this will, will guarantee that we don't have to have that discussion. We know that whatever the brand is, that they're going to be rated this and it will be a high quality hel- uh, hotel for many ye- years in the future. Um, and then the other thing is, um, as you'll note that we indicated that the hotel and not the parent company, as y'all know, many, uh, parent companies, um, have subsidiary, uh, corporations. Uh, there will be different hotels. There could be a range of different ones on the S R T scale. So this just, uh, verifies that it's that specific hotel, not the parent company, which is a, a very good move on Whitney's part. And then the other thing is, um, just indicates that the restaurant, uh, must be detached. Um, obviously with the hotel of that caliber in this area, uh, it's likely that a hotel, I mean, uh, excuse me, a restaurant will want to follow that development. And so this just guarantees that it's not just a, a restaurant that's stuck in a hotel, that it is a freestanding hotel in that same property. So anyway, I think it was a, I think the conditions are good. They're solid. So floor is open for any other discussion.
So this protects us in the city in the future. Say if this hotel chain sells to another hotel, they still have to adhere to these, this variance, this
That condition will stay. It runs with the property. It runs with the land, not the actual applicant that comes in. So it runs with the land. So yes, uh, the conditional use there each time, it, it, we do conditional uses in five year increments and we do it even though something may be there for years and years to come. It allows us to have a check and balance. So, you know, in five years, we check, still compliant, we carry it on. Uh, so if at any point in time it sells and a new tenant space wants to come in under that conditional use, we can ensure that it meets those standards as well.
Okay.
And that's what, what I'm talking about. When I say not the brand, but the rating, that would give us that protection because as y'all know, it's very common, it's happened in our city over the years where a new development comes in and it's one thing, then they, you know, let a few years go by and they sell out to another. And then the demand for the property changes throughout our city and then, so then you're left with a development that's not so shiny as it was, you know, a decade, uh, prior to that. So this protects us there as Whitney stated. So I, I feel good about it now. Um, still the concern about it being a little close to the park, um, you know, because that's kind of jammed in there. But I, I really believe if it's, if it me- meets these standards, I think the good outweighs the bad. And I think we can work, like we talked about last meeting, work with the, uh, the architectural drawings and where it's placed on the property. I think we can work around that to make it a good development for us if it meets these standards, you know.
I feel confident planning can, can address any issues that we, that the city would have with that.
And, and the last thing I would add to that is, I'm reminding y'all what you already know, but, um, you know, we're making decisions for what can happen in the future. You know, uh, the, the property owner, uh, very respectable businessman in our community, had no doubts whatsoever that he's going to try to do something in a quality way, but we have to know that once he sells that property, he's out. And so whatever he wants is pretty much, without us having standards like this in place, then we, the city could be at risk in the future. So, um, anyway, I think we accomplished our mission.
Whitney, have we ever done anything like this before? What do you count these pieces of work?
We have conditional use permits on, on several uses that we have out of the city.
Anything that's strenuous?
I, I wouldn't call it strenuous. I, I think the problem you have with this one that makes it a little different is this is, in, in the discussions of the initial branding that wanted to come here, it's the first time we've ever come across one that's never been identified on our scales. We, we classify our hotels and we always have classified our hotels under the S R T chain scale. So when we were approached with the initial, um, branding, it wasn't there. So, you know, that was, that was something new we took on. Um, and I, like I said, with it being equivalent to what's already over there, it, it gave it an even playing field, but it was one step further on this one simply because that's something we'd never come across and, and we want to make sure that whatever comes in there is a vetted, financially stable, good amenities, good price point that's, that's even with everybody else around there too. So have we ever done it to a hotel system before? No. Um, but there was a reason behind it.
And, you know, I know you've been talking with, uh, the, the landowner over there. Is he in agreement with what we have here in the memo?
We've been talking back and forth, uh, several times. Uh, I did get an email from him just before the meeting. Um, he's agreeable to this. Um, and he understands that even when this happens tonight, the conditional use permit still has to be applied for and the, the branding still has to come in front of this board in its own formal approval. So, um, he is willing to do that.
Any other discussion?
Nick, do we have to vote to, to take it off the table first before we vote for the other?
Yes. Yes, so you did get a motion and a second to vote. So you'd motion to take it off the table or vote on that and then you would motion to allow this as your conditional use permit standards that is still required to come back from the board.
Okay.
We hadn't voted the first time yet.
No.
No, sir.
So if there's, is there any other discussion, then we'll do, we'll do just that.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have a motion carries. So now is there a motion to approve this, uh, these stipulations for the future conditional use permit?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Flores. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Uh, have several things I want to update everyone about tonight. The first thing is, um, y'all know that we've had a third party contractor to cut condemned properties in the city and, uh, that contract had, uh, had expired. We had another company stepping up and doing that for us temporarily. And so we started talking about that, our Whitney and, um, our planning director and our, uh, public works, uh, director made a presentation to me and a suggestion that we bring that in house. Um, y'all know the frustrations. I know all of y'all have, have been frustrated with the amount of time, uh, that it takes when we have a condemned property, you know, in the summertime and the grass is tall. And so not only are we waiting on the court process and everything, then when we do condemn it, uh, then we're waiting on to get on the contractor's schedule. And so the bad thing about that is a lot of times by the time we get the property cleaned up, uh, then it's, the grass starts growing again and by the time we go through the process, they're in the same situation. So we, we do that with these problematic properties all summer long. And so, uh, what we're proposing doing is bring that in house and, and us start cutting those. Uh, that gives us, uh, discretion on when we do it. We can do it quicker. Uh, we've had numerous discussions about, you know, just cutting the grass. Uh, it, it, it may cut down on your safety, your rodents, your snakes, your things like that. Uh, but it still looks better. You have weeds growing over the sidewalk, the whole deal. And so bringing it in house, um, unfortunately to our guys that they're probably not liking what I'm about to say, but then I get discretion on what it looks like. And so it's going to look a lot better. And, uh, we know that we have a, a, a public works director that shares those, uh, quality standards and, and he believes that, uh, that we have, uh, that we will eventually be able to add the personnel, uh, to keep us, and we can go ahead. We have money in the budget now to go ahead and get the basic equipment, you know, lawn mowers, weeders, stuff like that. So, um, no vote tonight. I'm just prepping y'all that we don't need to do anything at this point. Uh, but the plan is to bring, uh, the management of condemned properties back in house and let our public works department do it. I think everybody will see that as a huge benefit. And so our other goal that's related to this discussion is y'all know that we've had vacant positions in our public works department for about five years now. And we've been struggling to find the people to fill those spots. Um, our new director, Robert Booth, has, uh, come a long way already. I think we're down to only one vacancy now. And so the reason we didn't put additional personnel on this budget is because we had ones that weren't filled in the past. And so in mid-year, uh, we're going to be asking to add, you know, between two and four new personnel. Um, and these personnel can manage these condemned properties during the summer months and during the winter months, they can, they can start doing work on other things, potholes and other stuff, you know, throughout the public works operation. So our goal has been to expand our public works department because we need more workers and we've just not been able to fill those spots. But the good news, we believe that, that we're going to get there and that we can, uh, you know, do a better job of the condemned properties. But, uh, any questions? Like I said, no, no action requested. Uh, I'll come back, uh, before you sometime in March and we'll start preparing, uh, make sure we got all our equipment and our personnel. So I'll, I'll come to you then with a, with a proposal on how we pay for it, how we adjust the budget for that. But any questions tonight about that?
Y'all like that?
I do.
Okay. Um, okay. And then the next thing, we've talked briefly about a major project in our city, the, the LED streetlight conversion. Uh, this is something that's been discussed for quite a while. Uh, Entergy has, um, has started the conversion process and basically what this does, it just changed the, changes the light fixtures, uh, from the old standard bulbs to the new LED. Um, the benefit to the city is it gives us better light, uh, which is always a factor in fighting crime in our city. Um, the more light you have, it's, uh, statistically cuts down or is a deterrent for crime. So it's important for that. And it's also important for the delays in getting the service of the lights when they go out. Y'all know we've had struggles with that, the amount of time it takes to get a streetlight back on. We, it just never made sense to me that it takes three months to get a streetlight back on. And so Entergy, we've, uh, communicated that with Entergy. And so this LED conversion solves that problem too. It would, these things are bulbs that don't go out for a much, much, much longer time. So we think this is going to be a great project for us. And the schedule is they're going to do, um, they're going to go by ward, starting in ward one. I understand that they have bounced around a little bit to some of the wards, but the major priority of completion is going to be starting in ward one and going through six, uh, in that order. And it's a project that's expected to take two and a half years to complete. But the good news tonight is it is underway. So we're happy about that. Dizzy Dean Baseball and Softball. Y'all know that's been a big thing for our city for many years. Um, as things have changed regarding competitive sports in the United States, uh, it's changed the, um, the recreational sports. Dizzy Dean is a recreational sports league. It's a great league, been around for many, many years. Uh, we've been blessed in the city to host the World Series and we got that extended in two thousand fourteen for another ten years. Um, over that time period, there have been changes, again, due to the, just the dynamics of, uh, of the kids, like so many kids now have, have chosen to play competitive, uh, softball and baseball. So it has decreased the participation in Dizzy Dean. And so we have seen declining numbers over the last, uh, few years in Dizzy Dean. And so we realized that we had to make some adjustments. This is a two thousand fourteen contract and the amount of money that went to Dizzy Dean from the city was based on the participating teams. And that number has been nowhere near in the ballpark as what it was in two thousand fourteen. So we requested that Dizzy Dean make some consolidations on the, uh, instead of having multiple weeks that they have the tournament, since the participation is not as great as it used to be, we've asked them to do a consolidation of their tournaments, uh, to make them bigger. So they're not weak for a lot of days. It's more, you know, kind of more bang in a short period of time, more excitement, more competition when you have more teams in the tournament. And also adjust the pay scale, which saves the city money if there's not as many teams. Um, so we have done that and made a proposal to Dizzy Dean. They have accepted that. And so just want to let you know that I'll be adding that to an agenda to bring that to your attention on, on a future agenda to approve that. But we feel like it's going to be a healthy thing. Y'all know that we have the agreement with Perfect Game. Uh, we think now that having Perfect Game there is maximizing our, uh, number of competitive events. Uh, we have some tournaments now that we're, we're attracting teams from places around the country that we've never had before. So it just adds to the tourism benefit to our city, but we've been able to preserve the Dizzy Dean agreement too and make it all work. So we got Perfect Game, but then we still have the time for, um, uh, Dizzy Dean as well. So I feel really good about it. It's, it just gives a, a fun time for all the kids. Whatever your skill set is, uh, there's a place for all of our kids to compete and have a big time. So I think it's going to be a, a, a really good thing for us. Um, moving on, um, y'all heard me talk about the Rat- Rasco Greenbrook Parkway traffic signal. Uh, y'all know that's by, uh, Greenbrook Elementary School and that signal has to be changed so we can add turning lanes. And it's, uh, mainly just want to let everybody know that we haven't forgotten about that. We're, we've been working on that. That's in process. It's just crazy how long it takes to get the materials in, to do a, a change to a traffic, um, to an intersection. And so just want you to know that that project is underway. It's just taking us time to, uh, to get it moving. Um, same thing with Getwell Road South widening project. I mean, you know, it's just, it's one of the craziest things that we applied for federal funding for this project in two thousand fifteen. What's today? December sixth of two thousand sixteen or what, what is this? What year is this? That's a long time. It's two thousand twenty two. And so we have been begging and crying and yelling and screaming and fighting all kinds of obstacles because it is a major need in our city. And it, it is that beside, besides a, uh, federal or state highway system, it is the most congested, uh, area in our city. And we need to get this project underway. And the good news is that, uh, I've been told that, you know, we got the bid awarded, waiting to have a pre-con meeting, but the good news is this thing's going to be under construction before March one. Obviously, we're in bad weather time, uh, but no later than March one, this thing is for real going to be under construction in two thousand twenty. Obviously, we're in bad weather time, uh, but no later than March one, this thing is for real gonna be under construction in two thousand twenty-three. So, that's a great news for us. Carrying on, Tulahoma and Goodman, y'all know that, um, that a few years ago, we, uh, we finalized the Central Park, um, Tulahoma multi-use trail, uh, that went south, uh, from Central Park on Tulahoma, uh, south crosses Goodman Road and goes south on Tulahoma to Maye Boulevard. As the Maye Boulevard, uh, road is extended from Getwell all the way to Tulahoma, there's gonna be another multi-use trail through there. Um, so, at that point, which should happen in two thousand twenty-three, that will connect the trail all the way from Baptist Hospital. We put in, uh, bi- designated bike lanes down Clarrington, those cross Sweeney and go, um, through Central Park and then come out to this multi-use trail on Tulahoma. Then they carry southbound across Goodman, and they're gonna connect to May. So, when that connects, all the multi-use trails that have been done at Snow and Grove Park, that we, that we approved tonight, um, and the other one that was done, finished two years ago, and then the other improvement, it's gonna connect all those, and this will be the longest pedestrian trail in the history of DeSoto County. So, that is in sight, so in two thousand twenty-three, we expect that to happen. I have, um, had just a few conversations with M.D.O.T., um, I know they're tired of me talking about this, but, I don't know about you, but I don't feel comfortable crossing Goodman Road on my, on my feet. And so, uh, w- we're not, we've had discussions about, just like we have a pedestrian bridge over Getwell, we've had discussions years ago with M.D.O.T. about a potential pedestrian bridge that would go over Goodman. Um, obviously, that's extra money for them, they're not too keen on the idea. And so, if we can't get that, then, uh, my plan has been to always do something different here to catch the attention of drivers. Y'all know Goodman Road is an animal of its own, um, the traffic that's on Goodman, the speeds and everything, uh, it's, it's very dangerous. So, what I have requested from M.D.O.T. is that they allow us to do extra painting on the street, striping to mark the road on both sides of, um, uh, Tulahoma, uh, and then to put extra signage there to just send that message way in advance. Uh, y'all may know this, but many trucks, uh, big trucks make a decision before they get to an intersection. If you don't know this, I'm sorry to have to tell you this, but they make a decision before they go through the intersection if they're going or not. So, regardless of what happens with the traffic light, they make a decision in advance if they're gonna stop or if they're gonna go. We've had some serious accidents on Goodman Road in the past because of that, and so, for that reason, I wanna do signals in advance of the intersection to send that message to drivers that, hey, this is not normal Goodman Road, this is a special section, this got a pedestrian crossing, it's time to notice, to slow down. And so, we're, we've been working on that to get approval and a permit from M.D.O.T. Um, I did, uh, achieve that this past week, I got the go-ahead, and so now, it's just a matter of designing exactly where we want it and what we want the striping to say. Y'all approved an extension of our striping contract, so that company will be the one that does, does those markings. Uh, but what I've requested is something like you would see it, um, where the pavement is painted at, uh, I fifty-five and Goodman, where they have the lanes, like, you know, you have the signage, but they have paint on the pavement too to tell you which lane to get in. So, this would be something that, uh, way in advance would say, you know, caution, pedestrian crossing, something like that, um, with, uh, extra signage and things like that. So, anyway, we're working on that and, and had a little bit of progress this week on getting M.D.O.T. to agree to that. But it is exciting that eventually there's gonna be, uh, not me, but there'll be people that are crossing the road right there. Um, and that is, uh, let me scan my list. That is basically all I have this evening, anybody got any questions for me about any of those topics?
Hey, have you heard anything else back about the debris vacuum truck? I mean, whether it's-
That's something that we're looking at a, a bigger picture, we're, we're wanting to get our own crews, like, as you know, we've made a, we have a change in leadership in our public works department, and so Robert Booth is our new director, uh, Robert and I have met numerous times. Uh, we've ridden the city together, um, to communicate areas that we think we can do better in, and so, uh, we're getting that project underway. We got our new personnel doing other things now, sweeping those intersections, doing things that we can do with hand, and that has already occurred. So, some of the islands at the intersections where you'll see little pieces of debris from car wrecks that accumulate there, uh, we're already starting to get those swept up and cleaned up, so we're already doing that, uh, with this new conversion and personnel. But then we're gonna revisit what you requested, that's still on the table after we get this going. We're gonna go back and look and see, is it feasible for the existing contractor to do this, or do, do we need to look at buying our own equipment? So, that's something that we're still in the process of analyzing that, but I will report back to you on that.
Is, uh, there's several of us that don't know who Robert Booth is, we know the name.
Robert Booth, would you please come forward, please, son? He loves attention, so he was waiting on this opportunity.
I mean, you know, I, I, I've met several people, and they go like that.
This is Robert Booth, this is the, uh-
You're the legend, we've heard all about you.
As of October, as of October first, two thousand twenty-two, this is the new public works director for the city of South Haven.
Right, that's it.
And I, I, I know he doesn't like to talk about himself, but I'll just tell you this, uh, he, he's in this position because he's the man, uh, that we want there. This guy is a, he's a problem solver, um, in the ten years that, that I've been mayor, um, I've relied on him for so many projects. And, uh, you know, Bradley would be the first to tell you that he relied on Robert a lot. Robert, uh, has been the, uh, superintendent of our streets for many years, and that goes from everything. Anything that has to do with streets, Robert's done it, Robert's been up on a, in a bucket truck on Goodman Road putting street signs. He's done everything we've asked him to do, he's, um, he's a s- uh, s- very skilled guy. As far as equipment, anything construction-wise, he can, he, he knows the equipment, uh, he knows how to, uh, manage the people, and, uh, he's just, he's just done a great job for many years, uh, with our streets, and now he's, he's adapting to his new role as public works director. But so far, since October, he's done an outstanding job.
Hope I can continue on.
How much gray hair did you have before you started?
I had some, but now, now it's starting to come out.
That's not happening like in the last month, is it?
It's starting to come loose.
Hey, I'd rather turn gray than fall out.
I'm getting some of both.
But public works, as y'all know, is a very, um, broad department, public works. The, the things, and Christie Faulkner can, uh, vouch for this statement, the things that people get the most excited about, uh, are the garbage pickup, which sanitation is under his authority, all the sanitation, he manages that, and then your streets, your potholes, your streetlights. That's the man that takes superv- uh, supervisory authority, you know, over all that. Um, and so, in animal control, you know, we have Perry Mason, that's our, uh, director of animal control, but he, he, uh, he reports to our public works director, so those are, those are huge, uh, departments, and so it's a big job, so, yeah, probably gonna have some work right there.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
The Robert, that's Robert Booth, so, anyway, that, that's where we stand with, uh, like I told you, we're gonna make some adjustments, and that, looking at that additional equipment is something that Robert is, is analyzing, of course. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on, um, next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Is personnel docket?
Personnel docket.
Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Okay, my bad, my bad.
He, he skipped Nick.
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve the personnel docket as presented on this date.
Second.
We have a motion by Baltimore Payne, second by Baltimore Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Baltimore Payne?
Yes.
Baltimore Kelly?
Yes.
Baltimore Hughes?
Yes.
Baltimore Jerome?
Yes.
Baltimore Gallagher?
Yes.
Baltimore Wheeler?
Yes.
Baltimore Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, did you have anything, Nick?
Just double.
Okay, city attorney's, uh, legal update is next.
Couple of quick items that were added, uh, Friday or in Monday, um, the first one is the, uh, went to bid for, uh, an ambulance, um, reverse auction for two thousand twenty-three ambulance, so it was a Stryker Power Pro XT stretcher with wings and, uh, IV pulling equipment hook, a low investment bid was an amount of three eighteen, three hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred six dollars from emergency vehicle specialist, so authorization to purchase that pursuant to the bid.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Hughes, second, Baltimore Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Baltimore Payne?
Yes.
Baltimore Kelly?
Yes.
Baltimore Hughes?
Yes.
Baltimore Jerome?
Yes.
Baltimore Gallagher?
Yes.
Baltimore Wheeler?
Yes.
Baltimore Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Uh, next is, uh, resolution for a surplus S, uh, Saline Police Department vehicle in accordance with Mississippi Code seventeen twenty-five, twenty-five subsection five, um, it was a total loss, um, vehicle from a wreck by travelers, so we need authorization to surplus that vehicle, um, to travelers.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Gallagher, second, Baltimore Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Baltimore Payne?
Yes.
Baltimore Kelly?
Yes.
Baltimore Hughes?
Yes.
Baltimore Jerome?
Yes.
Baltimore Gallagher?
Yes.
Baltimore Wheeler?
Yes.
Baltimore Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And then last is, uh, approval to transfer a vehicle, uh, two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer, um, to, uh, asset number fifty-one twenty-nine, um, to shelter insurance as a claim in the amount thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars. It was a total loss, same situation, insurance is paying as opposed to getting repaired, just paying the value of the vehicle, um, which is for show to the policy, so authorization for that transfer in accordance with twenty-five dash one dash forty-seven Mississippi Code.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Flores, second, Baltimore Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Baltimore Payne?
Yes.
Baltimore Kelly?
Yes.
Baltimore Hughes?
Yes.
Baltimore Jerome?
Yes.
Baltimore Gallagher?
Yep.
Baltimore Wheeler?
Yes.
Baltimore Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on this date.
I'll second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Payne, second, Baltimore Jerome. Is there any discussion?
Muddy Waters lives in South Haven?
Get down.
Muddy Waters lives in South Haven?
I know, I seen that, I thought it was cool.
That is cool.
Think it's a relative?
I don't know.
I thought it was funny too, there was a toilet leak.
Yeah.
They're actually, that's a large rental property. Room. Oh, okay. Interesting name, they're right.
Mm-hmm. If you like blues.
Okay, any, any other, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Baltimore Payne?
Yes.
Baltimore Kelly?
Yes.
Baltimore Hughes?
Yes.
Baltimore Jerome?
Yes.
Baltimore Gallagher?
Yes.
Baltimore Wheeler?
Yes.
Baltimore Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve the claims docket in the amount of three million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Payne, second, Baltimore Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Baltimore Payne?
Yes.
Baltimore Kelly?
Yes.
Baltimore Hughes?
Yes.
Baltimore Jerome?
Yes.
Baltimore Gallagher?
Yes.
Baltimore Wheeler?
Yes.
Baltimore Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session. So, moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Hughes, second, Baltimore Jerome, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries. The, uh, need this evening is potential and ongoing litigation involving the city, economic development within the city, personnel in the Saline Police Department, and interdepartmental personnel, no action. So, is there a motion to declare executive session? So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Baltimore Gallagher, second, Baltimore Wheeler, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries, the mayor and board will announce our executive session.